Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting for February the 23rd. Roll call. Martina Shea, I'm here. Andrew Murch.
Present.
James Malillo.
Present.
Lori Angers.
Present.
Spiro Thomo, I know he's here, he's on his way. Bill Bishop.
Present.
Dr. Chiro McGilio, I'll never get that right.
De-Meglio.
De-Meglio, De-Meglio. Not here yet, okay. And pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there any public input? Anybody online or on the phone? Again, I'll ask, is anybody online or on the phone who would like to make a comment on anything on the meeting tonight?
Can you hear me, Martina?
I can hear you.
Okay, great.
That was our public input. Okay, we have minutes from September 23rd, 2020. Somehow I have managed to file that in some compartment that is not readily available. The rest of you have it, are there any comments on it? For those of you who are new, we have no real input into the minutes. We review them, we look at them, we read them over, but they are done. And we just, if there's any mistakes, we get to correct them, but we do not get to vote on the minutes of the meetings. Any comments? We'll talk about minutes in the next. New business. Receiver superintendent announcements. Dr. Villar, I understand you have news for us on the budget?
Yes, good evening, everybody, I'm glad to see everyone, glad everyone is well. Tonight, we have a brief presentation that Seth Racine and I are going to present to the school committee and the greater community of Southbridge. Giving some preliminary conversation about the budget. It's pretty early in the budget season, but let me go ahead and share my screen if we can get this started. All right, hopefully we can see this slide.
Yep.
So this evening in our presentation, what we'd like to talk about are, as we're putting together the budget, really to acknowledge that we have some COVID-19 related challenges as we look to the future. Talk about our enrollment a bit and the Student Opportunity Act, which impacts Chapter 70 and overall state aid. So this year in particular, trying to put together a budget, thinking about future fiscal concerns related to COVID-19, it's a bit uncertain. Very recently, the CDC released updated return to school guidance. And a key component of that guidance is really consistently staying with the six feet of social distancing, which is something Southbridge we've done since the very beginning of school. And I do believe it's been an essential component of our multi-layered mitigation strategies. You know, six feet social distancing, the use of masks, hand sanitizer, hand washing, washing of surfaces, aggressive contact tracing are all strategies that we've utilized. But I think have allowed us to remain open with students in school, actually an increasing number of students attending school in person, much more so than many other districts in the Commonwealth. And so the CDC's new guidelines maintains that six feet social distancing and all the other mitigation strategies that mentioned. And as we consider our budget for next year, we have to think about where are we going to be when September rolls around? And what fiscal impact will that have? And candidly, some of this is very uncertain. But we know we're going to need some type of distancing which impacts class size. And so right now, we're running the numbers based on six feet social distancing and three feet social distancing. Because we're not sure where we'll be when school starts next year. We're also going to have to look at the number of teachers and classes, because obviously those factors are significant. Transportation limitations. Again, there's been some change in guidance from the state on transportation. We're currently not implementing any changes in our transportation because our system hasn't worked. But in the future, we might be able to put more elementary age kids on the same bus. So that could impact the number of bus runs that we have. I'd remind the committee that this year, we had to take ERS, Eastford Road School, and place that on a different time tier than the other two elementary schools. My preference would be to return all three schools to the same start and end times. But it's going to be dependent upon our transportation limitations. And right now, we don't know what that will be. We obviously have expended a lot of money this year on COVID-19 mitigation as far as disinfectant and on PPE. So we definitely, you know, will have to monitor these things. You'll see on the right-hand side of this slide that we've created a number of positions this year. So we have the district health and safety coordinating position, which I believe will need to carry over into the fall. We have bus monitors that we've hired, sanitization staff, nurses' aid, additional educational assistance, additional teachers, and even tech support. So all of that is very, you know, significant. And I'm being, let's see, why is my slide not updating? Odd. Give me a second here, I'm not sure why it's not updating for you.
Thank goodness, I thought it was just me, I'm like, oh my god, am I pros?
It's really strange. I actually was.
It was making the right sounds and lighting up, but.
Yeah. Well, here we are in the pandemic world. I tried to actually go to slide presentation, I believe is when it froze, so we'll do our best here. So as you can see, there's a long list of staff members that I just mentioned that we have needed to hire to open this year and we're likely to need next year. But we're not certain. And so we're going to go through this budget process and just be really transparent about that conversation. And, you know, we'll see where we end up as we get into late April and May. There'll be a lot more certainty around these positions. This slide that you can now see with the blue just highlights the $1.7 million in costs we incurred from July to December of this year to open school and create all these positions. So it has definitely been a significant burden. And I'm sure you would agree, we're all hoping to leave this behind and not need to be concerned with it. Here we go, next slide. If I can make that a little better for you all. One of the factors too is our enrollment has been declining. So you'll see that we're projecting around 1860, 1875 for next year. And it's down number of students. So that of course impacts our state aid and our Chapter 70 money, that Seth will get into in a little bit. But it's something as we're building the budget, we keep in mind. Another factor is students and families that are availing themselves of school choice. There's actually some good news in the school choice realm, which is over the last few years, we're starting to see a very small but increasing number of families staying in the district. And this year, we've actually seen a number of families, 15 students, enroll in our district from outside of the district. Now, I believe candidly, that is linked to the fact that we've been open in our elementary schools in particular, five days a week. And I think some families have taken advantage of that. But there's definitely an improving trend here. One of my goals is to make the Southbridge Public Schools a compelling choice for families, so that more and more families want to keep their kids in schools. And so we should see these numbers continue as far as kids leaving shrink and maybe more families choosing to come into Southbridge. So it's a metric we're going to keep an eye on, it also impacts our budget, and that's why we're sharing it this evening. At this point, I'm going to pause and let Seth take over. He's going to explain to you some of the major changes in school funding that I think have a dramatic impact on where we are not only planning for next year, but for multiple years out. Seth?
Thank you, Dr. Villar, good evening, everyone, it's my pleasure to be with you tonight. I think before we get into the information that came from the governor's budget last month, I first want to make sure that everyone has an understanding for how does school funding work in Massachusetts? And so.
Sorry about that, Seth.
That's okay. We just got just a little bit.
Not cooperating, gonna have to shrink it down.
Great, that'll work. So first, I want to make sure that you understand sort of how, what is the, how does the education funding work? How do we fund students in Massachusetts? Because then you can understand what are the changes that were part of the Student Opportunity Act that was passed last year on Beacon Hill. So, and after this, hopefully you all become education finance experts out of it. But you know, you hear comments like, "Chapter 70 state aid" and things like that, what does this all really mean? So there's really two parts to how the education funding model works in Massachusetts. So the first part here on the left-hand side is that every year, the state decides what is the minimum amount every community should spend on education every year. It's not the maximum, it's the minimum, which means you can spend above that. So they're sort of establishing the floor. And this is, all of this was created back in the 1990s. We've been carrying it on every year since. So every year, the state takes the numbers of students in every school district, in every community. And this includes both public school districts as well as charter schools. And then they also establish sort of amounts per pupil rates. These are the amounts that should be spent by students. And they're differentiated based on grade level, based on more is given to, for example, low-income students or English learners. There's a variety of different rates. So you take the numbers of students, times these rates equals this minimum spending floor. It's also referred to as the foundation budget. Okay, we've now established for the part one, what is the minimum amount that should be spent every year? The next part is, well, how do we pay for that minimum? And so the idea is it's going to be a combination of both local tax dollars and state aid. So you'll see on the right-hand side of this slide, local dollars being represented in green. The prep taxes or excise tax, a variety of other sources. So wealthier communities should spend, and the way the formula works, spend more of their local tax dollars on education and receive less state aid. But if you're a less wealthier community, you're going to get a lot more state aid to meet that minimum floor. And I should say, even though it is a straight line across these two examples, it is adjusted based on the needs. So if you're a community with higher need students, your floor is a lot higher, your minimum spending level is higher than a community with less need. So if we move to the next slide. Last year, the legislature passed a major change to this funding formula known as the Student Opportunity Act. Okay, so we have these two parts of the formula. And so first, what they did was they said, "We're going to change that left-hand part." Remember they're establishing the foundation floor. "We're going to increase these rates, we're going to actually substantially increase these over a seven-year period." It's really monumental, and we're going to make sure that these increases are higher for students in greater need. So here, we have five examples. We have an elementary school rate, a high school rate, an English learner who's a middle school student rate, an English learner who's high school, no low-income rate. So you can see the amounts are in the lightest blue is this current year's rate. Darker blue to the next, the next year is what's proposed for next year. But then we've also projected out, where is this going, right? So seven years from now, where will this be? And the most dramatic examples on the right, low-income, this past year, the per pupil rate was 4,0681. Next year's proposed to increase to 5,369. And in seven years, it's going to be projected to go to $9,589. And this would be multiplied by every low-income student in that community to establish this floor. It's really a substantial law that was passed last year and is a huge driver to that law. So if we skip down to the next slide after that, which is one more. Go to the next slide, please, thanks so much. So what does that mean, what does that mean for, for, aside as a calculation work, right? So higher per pupil rates will lead to higher minimum spending levels in Southbridge. Showing you a very simple way to view the formula, using the average per pupil rate. You know, they are differentiated by need, just decided to show you sort of a quick calculation saying that this past year, the current fiscal year, Southbridge had 2,231 students. Multiply that by the foundation average rate of 13,438 equals a minimum spending floor of 29,979,243. For next year, the governor said, "We are now going to start implementing this law." Even though it was passed last year, it was basically put on hold because of the pandemic. So in January, he said, "He's created a budget to start to implement that." Well, we take the number of students in Southbridge this year, 2,210. Now, as I mentioned before, the number of students is the district and charter schools. So it's a little different than the numbers that were shown earlier about the district enrollment. But then we see that the per pupil rate has been pretty substantially increased. It went from 13,438 this past year to 14,365, $900 per student increase. That means the minimum spending floor is 31,747,453. Now, if we start to project out where this is going, if we had the same number of students in FY '28 of 2020, we're projecting that this average per pupil rate may grow to 18,891, which would mean it'd be a 32% increase going to the minimum spending floor being 41,748,584. Really substantial minimum amount to spend on education for students in Southbridge. Now, the question is, how do we pay for that? So if we go to the next slide here. The higher, these bars are meant to sort of show, the higher that these rates go up, what will put pressure on is that most likely there will be more state aid and the local contribution will increase to meet this amount. As I mentioned to you before, there were two parts to the equation. We just talked about part one, how do you establish this minimum floor? The next part is, how do you pay for it? It's a combination of state aid and local dollars. And so here, we have state aid in yellow and local contribution in green. And we're going to see every year how much state aid is provided to help increase, to meet this growing floor. But it will most likely mean large increases in stated and large increases in the local contribution. So if we move to the next slide. So that was the sort of broad context and the Student Opportunity Act. What does this mean more specifically for next year? Well, the governor releases budget in January, as I mentioned. And here you see four years' worth of information. So the foundation budget is this minimum spending level for Southbridge. Then FY '19 was 28.7 million. Then it increased to 30.8 million in FY 2020. This past year, it was 29.979 million. And next year, it's proposed to increase to a historic high of 31.7 million. This is almost a 6% increase, a $1.7 million increase from FY '21 to FY '22. Then you'll see what is the minimum, the required amount to be spent by Southbridge, as well as how much is to be received in Chapter 78. Both amounts increased by over 2%. So the required local contribution in FY '22 is, was set at 8.2 million, an increase of $200,000. And Chapter 70 state aid increases for next year to 23.5 million, an increase of $520,000. And so we have sort of a net increase of both local contribution and Chapter 78, referred to here at the bottom of net school spending, being a total of $740,000. Okay. To the next slide. So I mentioned to you before that Chapter 70 and stated, and all this was part of the equation. There's also, as you may, you are probably aware from all the prior years, there's both charter school costs as well as charter school aid, there's also school choice costs. So here, we have isolated this to say, on a revenue perspective for the state, what's happening for Southbridge for education-related items? For the town, when they go through the town process, you're going to hear all the other sort of line items and state aid and assessments, which mean costs, or costs being paid to the state. There's a bunch of others out there that are non-education related, but specifically what's happening for education. The great news for Southbridge is that the net education aid, state aid for next year in the governor's budget is projected to increase by $258,000. That comes from these receipts, which are sort of aid in Chapter 70 and charter tuition reimbursement. This is meant to offset the cost of charter tuition costs, the assessments that are applied by the state. And then you see assessments are sort of like costs in essence. So we see a school choice line, there's charter tuition assessments that are increasing, special education line, which is for students in state-approved programs. And that amount is in total increasing by $367,000. So we've got education-related items for Southbridge increasing by 626,000. There's also costs of 367, the net result. So $258,000 of more education aid is flowing to Southbridge to help pay for this. It's really great news as part of the governor's budget. And I also want to mention that this is the first part of the budget process. It still needs to go to the House and then to the Senate, where it's possible that some of these numbers may increase and change. But out of the gates with the governor's budget, it's really good news for Southbridge that they're receiving more education aid that would be flowing to the town of Southbridge for education.
Okay. Thank you, Seth. So obviously, this isn't a budget. What we're talking about today are kind of the rails in which we're going to build our budget. Right now, the exercise that my staff and I are engaged in is looking at all of our FTEs, looking at all the costs, projecting what increases are going to occur in those line items. And we'll be bringing together all of that to a proposal that obviously we will both share in a public hearing with this school committee and will also have, be sharing with the town council. And so there's a lot that's going to happen between now and then. We'll get better clarity as to where the state is headed, as Seth has mentioned. And we'll hopefully have more information about where we're headed policy-wise around COVID-19. Certainly, the Southbridge Public School still has a lot of improvement as far as our academic performance goes. And so that too will be factored in as we continue to implement new programs and improve our performance despite the fact that we're in a pandemic. So that'll be incorporated into our budget proposal as well. So we're going to pause there to see if anyone has any questions in regards to the somewhat dense Chapter 70 information that Seth has shared with you. It's quite a bit to digest. I know some of you have been working with this information for a long time and others have not. So we'll pause, and if anyone has any questions.
Yes, Dr. Villar? Oh, Martina?
Yes.
How are you?
Good, good, good to talk.
Good. Dr. Villar, I think on the first screen that you had put up, you had mentioned that a total school population was around 1,800, is that correct?
Yeah, so there is a difference between what we have listed as students attending in our schools and Southbridge students who are attending school. So there's a variance there. So yeah, we're projecting a little under 1,900, 1,875 or so. But there are Seth's enrollment numbers and projections that show those are kids who still live in town but may choose to go to school somewhere else.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely, good question, thank you for that opportunity.
Yes, I have a question. As far as student enrollment goes, the decrease in school choice, is there, has the correlation been worked out between just decrease in general student population in the town versus that? Or is that a gen, is that an authentic, kids are staying in Southbridge as opposed to, we just don't have as many kids in Southbridge, so that ratio would close?
Well, the school choice number means a family has to take action and choose for their child to participate in school in another district. So that would be a child, if they didn't exercise that choice, they would be attending in our schools. So it's a solid number. Obviously, the change, I don't want to over, you know, amplify the change. It's still subtle and small, but it is going in the right direction.
Seth? You said that we would get $258,000 more from the state. But you had also said earlier that the towns would, the town would have to put in more money. Do you know how much money the town would have to put in addition to this $258,000?
So if we go back, let's see, it would be slide, yeah, slide 12, please. So the increase here in the required local contribution increases by about $220,000. Now, I will say, this is to meet the floor.
Yes.
The minimum amount. And currently, the Southbridge Public Schools for last year was above the floor. They were spending above that amount. So this number will have to be recalculated to take into consideration any municipal-related costs that could be charged towards this line. So they don't, the state doesn't, unfortunately, I can't give you sort of the specific line of how much now does the town of Southbridge have to pay to the Southbridge Public Schools in part of this? It's more saying, overall, they need to be contributing more.
Well, I know the town council will be asking us for the exact number. So just when you're doing your calculations, keep that in mind because they will be asking.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I think that's an excellent point. And, you know, full transparency, our budget request will probably be, you know, much more than the minimum expenditure. There's a lot that needs to happen. At the same time, we try to be realistic in our request. And, you know, I have been working with the town manager very closely, work well with the town council chair, and I look forward to meeting with the full town council. Because we recognize that Southbridge has a lot of financial pressures on it. And I also recognize that, you know, we have to improve our schools. So there's a balancing act we're going to need. And there's definitely a lot going on in Southbridge finance. So all that is in the mix at the moment.
Martina?
Yes, Bill?
Yeah. Dr. Val, I noticed you had like a million. I'm gonna, I'm looking at a lot of slides. We had over a million dollars in money necessary to get us, try to get us through this pandemic situation. Did any of that come from the first stimulus package or are we expecting to get any from the hopefully the next stimulus package?
Yeah, so on this slide I I just returned to, you'll see at the top near the right hand side, ESER. So those are federal monies that were applied to some of these expenses. And then you'll also see coronavirus relief fund. Those are also grant funds that were applied. Cares for the town and FEMA. So those are all different sources related to relief that helped pay for this. We're anticipating additional COVID-related funding so that my expectation is to offset the need for many of these things as we roll into September. I hope some go away. But it, you know, there, for example, I'm pretty certain we're going to be wearing PPE for a long time and we're going to have to purchase a lot of masks and we're going to have to do a lot of cleaning. And many of the staffs that we hired, we're going to still need in September. But we're going to look at that critically and we're going to look at that based on state and federal guidance and try to whittle it down anywhere we can without being unsafe. It's like started this year based on safety. We're going to start next year based on safety. But there are federal dollars and we're going to continue to work with the town to make sure we spend them appropriately. So far, it's been a good partnership. The town has helped quite a bit and we've been able to keep our schools open.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Along the lines of based on that, I heard on the news today that the DESI is order issuing new guidelines from six feet to three feet in schools and a potential no remote slash hybrid anymore, starting in April. What's your opinion on that? Like, are we required to do that if they say that?
So the DESI's guidelines on social distancing have been at three as the recommended, six only when you can't ensure other safety measures in place. That's been their recommendation from the beginning. I decided early on that we were going to go to six feet. I'm glad we did. I think it's made a significant difference for a whole host of factors. What you heard about today is there was new guidance that was released from DESI. They are absolutely moving forward to require school districts to start to bring elementary age kids back first and then to move towards bringing more older children back into school. Remote learning will be an option for families until the close of this school year. I would imagine we're going to find ourselves in a situation next year where remote learning would be most likely not the first option, maybe even prohibited. That I'm not sure. But certainly going to be highly limited, assuming everything goes well with vaccination for all the teachers and et cetera. We're ahead of the curve when it comes to kids in school. We have about 75% of our elementary age kids going to school in person, five days a week. Those numbers have grown since even as things got worse in December, more and more kids are still coming back to school. We have far fewer secondary age kids coming to school, even though we've invited more back. I think that's going to be a bigger struggle for us as a district. And likely until remote is no longer an option, we'll struggle to get the older kids to want to get dressed and come into school. Having a high school aged daughter at home to stay in their sweatpants and log in. But we all know that's not the best way for them to learn. So the new new guidance, I think, is really being focused on districts that to this day still haven't had kids in school. And it's amazing, but we're that far ahead. And I think it's to the benefit of our children in Southbridge. I think it's, you know, I'm waiting for a mid-year assessment data. Some of the principals have told me it's much better than we would have thought. I think having kids in school in person is important. But there are districts again that haven't. And and so the state is definitely putting pressure on them. At this point, though, I believe we'll be able to continue to operate the way we have until the close of school.
Do we have any plans to up our middle school from two days to say the high school level of four days? Are we planning on two days the rest of the year?
No, we definitely would invite certain students who need to have already been invited to come back. It's absolutely an option. There are staffing limitations at the middle school. It makes it a little harder. But in general, our philosophy is if the family wants their kid back in school full time, we're going to find a way to do it. The limiting factor at the secondary age kids, which impacts middle school dramatically, is the insistence that I have on six feet of social distancing. We just can't get all the bodies into the classrooms with six feet. So that, I just think until things calm down, I don't believe we can move from that. I think it would create unnecessary danger for folks in town. Once all of our adults are vaccinated, that might be something we can revisit. And then it'd be much easier to get all kids back into school. But for right now, the five days a week, we have to limit to those cases where, you know, it's just imperative for the student to do so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay. Dr. Val, we'd like to thank you for this presentation. Seth, you were masterful. Your best work.
Thank you.
No, it was you. I watched you grow over the past year and so and and you're you're really, you're anticipating our questions so that we have not as many left to ask you. We'll look forward to the official budget presentation. Until then, thank both of you and the rest of the staff for your good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairman's announcements. The first announcement we have is about the minutes. We have been having some trouble taking minutes, keeping minutes, getting them up in a timely fashion. Talked to Lori Gillickson. She's going to try to get us someone to take our minutes and go back to the ones we have not yet taken and take them off of the the videos so that we will have at by the end of the year, a full recount of of the information that has come through the school committee. I think next year we should put, be sure to include in our budget a someone to take our minutes so that as the the guidelines for the open meeting are that we get the minutes up as soon as we can. James called me today and asked me where some of the minutes were. And I told him we would talk about it at the meeting. I don't want you to think I was putting you off. It was just I wanted to say it to everybody at the same time. So thank you for your patience. Any feedback on that? Don't let somebody else do it. Yeah, that's my answer too. Hopefully, we're going to be back at the town hall. I've talked to the powers that be and it looks like we should be meeting very soon at the town hall. There the telecommunications team is is working like mad to get it set up so that we we and the school committee, the school, excuse me, the school committee and the town council can have in-person meetings. It's so much better. People are more willing to come and talk to us. I think that's all I have. Anybody else have anything? Members forum, Lori, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Bureau?
All set. Thank you.
Andrew?
I'm all set for today. Thank you.
Bill?
No, I'm just very impressed. We have 75% of the elementary schools going to school five days. That's that's very impressive. I'm delighted to hear that and because the kids feel they need to be in school. They really, really do. I think Dr. Val and his team has done a great job. We haven't heard of any massive outbreaks in the Southbridge schools just themselves. Most of them in the effort because it is. It's something no, none of us have ever experienced. So keep up the work, gentlemen, ladies.
I concur with Mr. Bishop.
Yeah, it's 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 pretty amazing. I didn't realize we had 75% going five days a week and that other people from other towns were going, hey, we can send our kids to Southbridge and they will get an education, a full education. There will always, of course, be some kids who who really need that extra security of being at home due to their health issues. I remember when I was a kid, we had one student who was on a speakerphone all day long because of of health issues.
And if I just say that the the thanks really goes to the teachers, they're doing a fabulous job. They really are doing great, great work.
If you haven't had the opportunity to watch some of our teachers in action, doing remote and in person at the same time, you really should. They are handling it really well. I'm I'm impressed with our group of teachers that we have in all of our elementary schools. They are spot on teaching.
I've always thought we had the best.
We do for sure. Now, we know.
James?
Can I? Can I ask you a question of Dr. Val?
Sure.
I'm not extremely familiar with the Southbridge Academy, but I saw there was a dust up recently in town. I just wondered if you could take a minute or so and just explain how much of the building there that you're using? Because obviously, some of it isn't up to standard, but.
So, yeah, and I know that Jack Jovan, there was a Facebook posting where someone was questioning because the school, rightfully so, got a sign put up in front of it. We have about 52 students registered at Southbridge Academy. And it's a school that's designed for students who are really struggling in our secondary schools from grades six to 12. Many of the students who attend have what we call an individualized education plan, IEP, which also is called special education. And many of those students, if we didn't have Southbridge Academy, we would have to tuition to extremely expensive schools outside of our district, which tuitions go, and I'm not exaggerating, really anywhere from $40,000 to half a million dollars a year, depending on what the students' needs are. The academy, I was just there today doing a walkthrough, which we do every month in all of our schools. And I was just very impressed with the fact that it has gone from, when I first started, to be quite candid, I felt it was a holding pen. It is now a performing school where kids are being taught curriculum and have behavioral and social expectations. Really tremendous turnaround. And I, again, the staff there deserves a lot of credit. So that school uses both sides of COLAB, the old trade portion, the front portion, and they use the parts that actually at one point were my office. And so they use that whole wing. I've got the middle school on one side and they got the high school age kids on the other side. Administration is kind of in the middle. We also house our special education supervisor there as well. And our program for enrolling students in the district is also housed in that building. As far as the standards go for the building, when it was shut down, my, and again, this is what I've been told, Mr. Jovan and I have had long conversations about this. Others may know more information. But it certainly is not a building that is ready for 21st century. It's an old high school building that was very old when it got shut down. So it's cinder blocks. It's not Wi-Fi wired in the way that our high school is. It doesn't have all the bells and whistles of our new high school, middle school. It is very much an old building. But as I mentioned, my office was there. It's not an unsafe building. The air quality is not unsafe. The heat works, even air conditioning in one half of the building works. But it's all relocating that program is not really possible in the short term. So we have done a lot of work to maintain the building and clean the building and paint the rooms. It's quite attractive now inside, given its age and quite functional. I think in the long term as a town, this is something I talked with the town manager about a bit, is we have to look at building utilization. We have to look at level distribution. And do we need two schools with grades two through five? It's a question. I don't have an answer to that. But we just have to look at which buildings are the buildings the town needs to invest in and which buildings keep online. And like the old middle school, some might be, you know, used as an asset for the town and either sold or rented. So there's a long-term building use study that we have to engage in. But Southbridge Academy is a thriving school, doing a great job. Again, 50 kids are benefiting from it. And I actually said to the staff today after we walked through and I observed them teaching, again, kids on at home and kids in person. I think it's a life changer for some of those students. Because I actually saw students today, who I remember two years ago, who spent the majority of their day wandering the halls of the school, hiding from staff members when they were going to our other school, the other middle school. I saw them today in class, engaged, learning, and that's what they need. So I think it's a great program. It's it's really going to make a difference. And it also makes fiscal sense, which is great.
Thank you for the descriptive answer and your presentation.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? All except a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well done, team. Well done.
Everyone stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.